Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Northampton Training Board Meeting. It's Thursday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting is being recorded. We have a few items on the agenda, a public hearing, and then some smaller administrative discussions about reviewing some older plans and A and R. But before we start the meat of our agenda, we traditionally hold a little time for public comment because anyone in the audience who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight for the planning board, if the item is on the agenda, there'll be time for public comment at that point. So is there anyone out there which is the world of Ellen, John, and Chris who would like to come forward? All right. Hearing none, then we'll move right into our seven PM public hearing. This is a special permit amendment by Tilforura Realty Investments, the modified setbacks in the cluster open space project on forty-nine Ridgeview Road in Florence, map ID forty-one through fifty-nine. Someone here to make a little presentation for it.
Um, so, um, I don't, is Chris, is that Chris three, is that the applicant? Can unmute? Um.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
You mean, all right. Oh, just take me into your kingdom now, God, please. Good evening, folks. I am the seven o'clock meeting. Thanks for, thanks, thanks for meeting me tonight. So I am very simply just requesting a special permit under the two thousand fifteen special permit that was granted back in fifteen under Cluster Developments. I got a real nice house at forty-nine Ridgeview in Northampton. Take a long story short, it's supposed to be thirty feet off the road. It's twenty-six. Quite frankly, I'm the general contractor. Anything that happens on my job site, good or bad, ultimately is my responsibility. It's my responsibility. Very simply, folks, when we laid it out, I made a decision on site to shift the house so that the house had more sun exposure, so that the front door lined up with the neighbor's front door at the street, and so that the driveway was a little bit smaller. I didn't use as much asphalt. And when people came up the street, they didn't see all this siding on the garage. They saw the house. I guess, well, from now on, I'll always call my surveyor when I do any type of movement. I just figured moving it a little bit to the, to the left wasn't going to do anything, do any harm. And it did. I'm four feet short. And I guarantee I'll never do it again, and I'm sorry it happened. It wasn't, it was not done deliberately.
Um, so I just want to clarify. I think the surveyor showed a twenty-five foot measurement at one corner because the house isn't exactly parallel to the street. So I think that's on the plan. So the request would be for a reduction from thirty foot front, that front setback to a twenty-five foot setback.
Yes, did I say twenty-six? I'm sorry. It is twenty-five. I'm sorry. It is twenty-five.
Carolyn, how did this come to our attention or to the applicant?
Um, so the, um, the buyer was interested in purchasing and through the due diligence process, I believe it, um, it came about that this, the house was not at the right location. And so I believe there's still someone who, so the buyer has, um, you know, sort of, as far as I understand, stopped proceeding until this could be rectified because there's no other mechanism to change that. I mean, luckily, that, I guess, the zoning was amended a few years ago to eliminate the minimum setbacks for in cluster open space residential developments. So if the zoning had not been changed, there would have been no recourse other than a request for variance, but it doesn't qualify for the request for variance. So that's why they're in front of the planning board because the thirty-foot front setback is no longer a current requirement for, um, special permit for an open space residential development.
George, if I can jump in just to add to that, uh, it came to our, it came to my attention when the buyer of record surveyor came out and said, you're too close to the street. And quite frankly, I'm just going to be honest and say I, I didn't get it until probably nine days ago, and I finally sat down with my surveyor and he showed it to me on his computer on his CAD form and said, by doing this, this is what happened.
Thank you. Any questions for board members before we turn it over to the public? All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to talk regarding this application? Ellen Barker.
Uh, you have to unmute.
Am I unmuted now?
Yeah.
Okay. The buyer is still extremely interested in buying this house. It's a beautiful little neighborhood and the house is great. It's just, um, yeah, and you know, at the time that the original permit was, was issued for the subdivision back in two thousand five, before anything was built, the ordinance was different and, you know, the setbacks. And so under current, current ordinance, there, as I understand it, there aren't really subdivision setbacks. So it complies under current ordinance. And that's what we're hoping that, that, um, you know, that it will be approved and she'll be able to buy it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? All right. Well, we'll go back to the planning board. Are there any questions? Pretty straightforward.
There was a, um, a letter from, I, I think one of the requirements was a letter from the homeowners association, um, saying that the, you know, they were fine with amending the setback. And, uh, Chris Bloom, the, um, Chris three here has that letter in his possession and, and, um, you know, evidently the, the whole neighborhood is fine with the fact that the house is where it is, and they would love to have my buyer become their neighbor.
The planning board has a copy of that letter now, correct?
Yes, it's in the file, it's in the record. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Ellen, just for our minute to do, um, I just identify where you live, your address.
Where I live?
Yeah.
Uh, I live in West Hampton at forty-eight Southampton Road in West Hampton, and I work for Dilep Real Estate in Northampton.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I would, yeah, I would just like to clarify for the board. I think, um, you know, there's, there are a couple of ways you could do it. You could amend a special permit that's just applicable to this property, or you could amend the special permit to state that all the front setbacks are uniformly modified to a twenty-five foot minimum. Um, so that, you know, down the road, if somebody wants to put an addition on their house in the front, then they could, you know, if they're not currently at thirty feet, they have more room. So it's up to the board to determine if you just want to narrowly focus it on this property within this cluster or have it applicable throughout.
Carolyn, under the, there's no requirement for any front setback, though, correct?
Correct.
And so if there was a cluster development with the same plan that was filed in two thousand eighteen, and then someone wanted to put an addition on their front porch, there would be no planning process at all, right? They would just do it.
Well, it would probably be a site plan amendment because what you're approving is the project as it's presented with the standard building envelopes. So it kind of depends on how the application comes in and how the board approves it.
So would any addition, no matter whether it's over some hypothetical non-existent setback or not, have to come to the planning board under a cluster development?
Um, I, again, it's going to depend on how it's initially submitted. If, um, for example, if the applicant were to show ten-foot setbacks all around, you, you would approve it as presented with the building envelopes as such. Um, and then they would build according to that, to those parameters. And so if there was a modification, then it would require an amendment. That's typically how it would happen. There's usually, you know, in whatever you're approving, there's, um, the plans that you are in front of you or what you're approving for the light, for, um, you know, building envelope, not necessarily the structure, but just the area in which the structure can be built.
So under the new cluster development scheme, even though there's no front step back required, the cluster development has to propose, here's the front setback for my cluster development that I'm
Yeah.
implying for this project, that all of the houses are this, they could, but it doesn't have to be twenty-five. It could be.
It could be whatever.
Six and a half inches or whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to me, it seems like the twenty-five feet was clearly a happenstance act of, uh, the chaos of the universe. Uh, and, uh, it seems really odd to make that rule apply to everyone. But I guess I don't know if that's time to talk about that now or not.
Yeah, I, I agree somewhat. I don't know why it was put twenty-five feet on this one cluster development. If in fact, somebody could come forward and petition, uh, build to fifty feet or sixty feet.
Uh, the subdivision's almost built out, so I don't think it's really going to be an issue here. But, um, I, I just wanted you to be clear that you, you could determine your decision either way for just this property within the cluster or have it uniformly applied.
Is there any, um, is there any, uh, mechanism within the homeowners association, if anyone wants to put an addition on their house, that it gets reviewed by the homeowners association in some way?
No, none of it's within this, the original setbacks in the building envelope. If it's all within the original approved plan, then it just is a building permit.
But for this particular house, I mean, you know, with, with current ordinance, if they built the house, you know, if, you know, the, the original permit was two thousand five and things were different back then. I mean, current ordinance doesn't require a setback. So does that mean, I mean, does that give us any leeway for this particular instance of this particular house on Ridgeview Road?
Yes, Ellen, it certainly does. We're, we're talking kind of about the precedent. How, how am I really impact others down the road?
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, all the people on, all the board members, meaning one way or the other, has to have our motions to speak to this one house lot or to grant the, uh, release to all of the houses in this subdivision.
I would lean towards doing it uniformly. So there isn't just one lot that has, you know, special privileges. I don't, like David was saying, twenty-five just seems to be a random number that got pulled out of the hat. So, you know, we love to talk about, well, how did we decide on this number versus some other number? But, um, I don't really care what the number is, honestly. I just think it should apply to all lots.
Um, so the language might say that it, um, we're granting relief in this situation and in, uh, all of the lots in this development then will abide by the zoning amendments, the zoning changes of two thousand seventeen would provide for building up to the, uh, lot line.
Well, what's in front of you is a request for the twenty-five feet, but the, that can only come before you because currently there's no minimum front setback. So I, your motion really should be to accept the change from a thirty-foot front setback for when it was permitted, and it would be a permit amendment to go to twenty-five feet. And it could either be a permit amendment that's applicable only to forty-nine Ridgeview, or you could say the special permit is amended to alter the front setbacks for all the lots to be twenty-five feet instead of the thirty feet that was approved at the time.
I, I don't see why we should be limited to those two options, honestly. There's no, there's nothing in the ordinance that provides any front setback. Why couldn't we say there's no front setback for any of these lots?
I see what you're saying. Yes, you could do that.
Right.
Yes. So just whatever you decide, make sure you, you're clear on your motion so that I can make sure I'm, I'm putting that in the decision.
I mean, I don't know. It's hard. There's no clear, like, obvious choice. I would just say the nature of a cluster development is to have a little bit of density and a lot of open space, right? I mean, that's the sort of philosophy of it. So if you pick, I don't know, I mean, just pick a, you are a, you know, which is kind of something like a neighborhood that we're trying to make within an open space, you know, that has a twenty-foot setback. I would do something like that, you know?
I'm going to text the application over again and scratch out twenty-five and put in zero?
No, you don't need to.
I don't get into that.
No.
I'm teasing, I'm just teasing.
I'm, I'm not sure why we would limit this one subdivision to twenty feet. Um, if in fact, these are subdivisions can go all the way, there would be no, um, no setbacks at all. But why should we reach there?
Well, George, I guess it's tricky. That's why I was asking about the homeowners association because it's not, there are no setbacks required in the cluster development application, but when the site plan is put together and reviewed by the planning board, like theoretically, the planning board would sort of look like, does this make sense, right? And if someone just wanted to say, like, build right up to this, to the right of way under this current plan, it might start to feel out of place in some sense. And if there was a homeowners association review of the addition, you know, you could sort of say, well, they'll deal with it. They like, we'll vote it down if they don't want it or, or whatever. But, uh, under this, if we just go to zero, I mean, I, I guess it's something we could think about. I don't know. I don't know how much of a danger of this happening there is. I mean, it still has to comply with open space requirements and things like that.
Carol, there is a lot of open space around this particular development. There's lots of conservation land. I don't know that anyone's planning to build an addition or, or whatever, but, um, I, I don't think, I think there's, there's one flag lot that remains to be built on, but everything else is already there.
Thank you, Ellen.
If that makes a difference.
Right. It's quite unlikely that someone's going to put a new guest bedroom between their house and the street, right? I'm fine with George.
Yeah.
Carolyn, that was going to be my question. You said this is mostly built out, but we just heard from, um, Ellen that there's at least one lot that isn't built out. That's my only question about just throwing it wide open is that would this then open it up that all of the other houses have a thirty-foot setback? This house has twenty-five, and then the final house has zero. If it's a flag lot, that's not, well, I guess it would still be an issue, but it's not going to show up anyway. But Carolyn, can you just talk, is that the only lot that's, um, remaining to be developed here?
Um, I believe so, and the flag lot standards are different anyway. They're not part of the cluster. So you don't have to worry about that one.
Okay.
Yeah, everything else is built out. It's a real cute neighborhood, you know, with a lot of landscaping and, and, um, you know, this house is going to be really nice once my buyer gets in there and.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. We appreciate the perspective from a realtor. They're all cute neighborhoods.
Okay, I'll stop.
Who, uh?
I'd like to make a motion
Please do.
to close public comment.
My second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All right, we have enough information from the applicant and, uh, participants, so we have to have a, a local vote on the motion for the public hearing. Melissa?
Yes.
And, uh, Corinne?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Hello, Sam Taylor?
Yes.
And the chair votes for public hearing also.
Thank you. Thank you very much, folks.
No, we just closed the public hearing, Chris. We didn't vote on the, uh, application yet. So that's our next vote. Don't leave us yet. Okay, um. So I'm, I'm happy just to stick with the language of the application from thirty to twenty-five feet. We could make that, uh, remain to the whole subdivision, which is fine. Um, I'm sure if other people wanted to go beyond that, they could find another way to do it through the VBA or something else, but that's, you know, some stuff for the subdivision, let's kind of stick to that. Anybody want to try that in language?
Yeah, I guess I missed what you said, George. You said you, you liked the twenty feet or you like?
The twenty-five feet that proposed in the amendment from thirty to twenty-five. And so that's the other resident would have the availability to go to twenty-five also.
Sure, I, I move, we, uh, change the report from setback to the, the, the minimum front setback to twenty-five feet in this cluster development.
My second.
And we discuss them. All right, the motion's been made and seconded. We'll go to a vote point again. Melissa?
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
And Marissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Sam?
I'm going to stay in. I didn't hear the presentation.
Thank you. And the chair votes, yes, so it's nothing yet in one extension. He misses in one of them. Well, thank you very much, Ellen, for joining us, and Chris, good luck on your next project. Let's keep going. So at this point, we'll, that's our main agenda item. We'll move now to the other administrative things that Carolyn asked for. What would you like to start with, Ellen?
Um, I guess what's the next one? Big Y. We can do the lighting. We don't have any A and Rs, so it's just going to be the big Y lighting to close out a Beaverbrook in minutes. So, um, I forwarded you the as-built plans that, uh, the big Y sent. Do you want me to put those on the screen or are you guys all set with that? Basically, there are a couple of hotspots under the canopy that were just over seventeen-foot candles. You would approve the plans at about sixteen-foot candles. They also are four thousand K temperature lights instead of three thousand, but that also may affect the, um, the illumination levels as well. So it was a mistake on their part, but they wanted to pitch it to the board to see if you would accept that modification in their as-built, or if not, then of course they would swap out the lamps and then reevaluate the light levels.
Can I, uh, this is slightly disconnected to, to this. Right before I joined the board, I know, because it was talked about, there was a, a meeting, where I think it's connected to Smith about looking at what these light candles mean. And it's a discussion that's always brought up. I, I guess I'd appreciate, but I mean, we, we don't have to have all group saying, but if someone could send me to some, someplace that I, so I can go and see exactly what, you know, fifteen or sixteen means.
Um.
But the answer, I mean, I guess the answer is that they shouldn't, they're a huge company. They shouldn't have screwed up, and they need to go back and fix it. But separate from that, I would like to have a better understanding of what that, what that is.
Yes, I can try to send you some technical data. I think that it would probably be pretty hard for you to detect one level change between sixteen and seventeen. Um, so, um, I, I mean, you know, like anything, if there's a big jump, then that's where you would, you, your eye could probably detect it. I'm not technically savvy enough to tell you what that is or any more detail about that. But I can, we can also, we're, we're going to be having a more technical detailed discussion about lighting because we have, we have to amend our ordinance and, um, we have a draft that's been floating around, but, um, uh, I haven't, it's not quite ready to come forward again, but I'm sure we'll be having those technical details, discussions, uh, at that time as well.
I mean, I just curious why they didn't accidentally make a mistake and go one lower?
Well, actually, just to also confirm, those lights are on a dimmer. Um, so they can actually tweak it now and bring them lower. The problem with the dimmer, of course, is whoever's in control of the dimmer can ratchet it back up again.
No way.
So, you know, there is a solution to the light levels, not the temperature control, without swapping out the lamp. Um, but those two are also, um, a bit related. So, you know, they're two, they're two, um, areas in which they're not complying to the plan that they presented. And so you, you all should just determine whether or not, um, you want them to address that either through dimming or through swapping out the lamps and then coming back with another add.
I'd be in favor of them swapping out the lights. I, I don't think we could ever notice a foot candle or two, but you know, the, the color temperature, we will notice. Um, and we did specify three thousand, so, um, I know it's a bummer, but that would be my vote.
One else, or?
I, I think, uh, if you saw three thousand and a four thousand without the other one there, you wouldn't know the difference. And I think car headlights are often far bluer. This, it's, this is, there's embodied energy in the lights that are already there. It's totally wasteful. It doesn't improve anybody's life to swap these out. I think, let's leave it. Let's move on. I don't, I don't, I don't understand. Well, who, what are we making better, other than like, we feel like we made a rule and they violated the rule? I mean, to me, I think.
Well, I will say that I remember this discussion, and this was a point of discussion specifically, uh, and, and was, was kind of one of the more, I mean, it wasn't a contentious site plan that I, you know, discussion that I recall, but what, what there was to talk about was the lights. I mean, that being said, I do actually think it's, well, I mean, I don't, I don't guess that these lights would go unused or couldn't, you know, be repurposed or resold. Um, like they couldn't work something out. I don't know. It, we spent some, we spent some time talking about the lights specifically and, 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 and they, do, am I recalling correctly that they wanted?
One, one hundred percent. We, we talked about this.
Right.
And they asked for it to be higher, and we said, and we said, no. And then that clearly they passed that on to someone. clearly they passed that on to someone Zimmerman's or whoever they buy their lighting for. And, I mean, I guess outside of, I'd like to know why they chose something that didn't comply.
It seems to me from, from the spec that's on the, on the sheet, it seems like they just chose the wrong, the four thousand, sorry. The four thousand instead of the three thousand Kelvin color temperature. It's the same luminosity. It's just the amount of light you get out of a higher temperature bulb is a little bit more than the the warmer, yellow or light that we tend to use in houses. It's so, it's a one foot candle difference. That is totally not something you can see. All right. I mean, am I wrong? That's how I read the, this, those drawings.
Right, but if we have standards for a certain amount of foot candle.
But they can just use the dimmer.
But again, the dimmer, I think, and I never knew you could use a dimmer on such high output lamp poles across that much of a range. And again, if we give them the dimmer option, who knows if they'll manipulate that as time goes on even higher. I don't, I think what we're saying here is with the three thousand color, they won't be able to dim beyond, they won't be able to raise that dimmer to move it beyond the specified luminosity.
Can I, can I ask, like, I mean, I, I one hundred percent agree because waste, you know, taking something out and wasting it, I mean, it's obnoxious they did this, is like, I'm thinking about like a a, you know, like an apartment building where, you know, we provide the heat and, you know, the thermostats are under a box with a key. So you can't mess with them. I mean, can we just have them do it? And there is a, there's a, it's own, there's a different on-off switch separate from the dimmer and they just set it where it should be and, and put a box over it and call it a day.
So I just want to say that you could, so there has been a lot of discussion and particularly from other experts in the field about the color temperature and the impacts to wildlife, to the community, to dark sky. And so dropping down below three thousand has been sort of the recommended position. It's not in the zoning yet, but it's in the draft because we've had this discussion. So now you guys have been in the position of requiring that as a permit condition. So that's a separate conversation from dimming the lights because it'll still be a bluer or cooler light than what was permitted. So I just want to make sure you're clear about that, those distinctions.
So then maybe when we have to discuss them about lighting down the road, it could be a little discussion around the ability to dim light. And dimming is always seen in kind of a lowering kind of phase, but of course you can dim upwards also.
I mean, you, they do have dimmers that, you know, when you program the dimmers, you can program the ceiling and floor of how much it dims. I mean, I don't know what, they didn't give us their submittal or shop drawings for their, their control system, so we have no way of knowing. I mean, it just seems, I don't know, to me, it's just the color temperature, as you said, is not in the zoning. It happened to be what they submitted, but we don't have an ordinance on, on color temperature. Carolyn, I hear what you're saying about, like, there's science about warm versus cool light, but that is, those studies do not address three thousand versus four thousand. They look at like twenty-seven hundred to five thousand. You cannot tell the difference, honestly, unless you have the next to each other of three thousand versus four thousand. They're both on the warmish side. I just, and, and again, they're surrounded by headlights that are at four thousand, five thousand, that are much cooler, like there's going to be semi trucks with like huge halogen bulbs. Like, I don't know, it's, again, like, whose life are we improving with this?
I think it's not really about the lights. It sounds like if we want to stick to previous conversations that you've had on the board, or if you want to change what you've previously said. Like, if there's not a big visual difference in the light, I don't think we need to argue about it.
But again, if our previous applicant came in and said, whoops, I made a mistake. And it was a pretty, a pretty big mistake. You know, it wasn't you, it wasn't my fault, but whoops. And Big Y has basically saying the same thing, whoops. Pardon me, you grant me absolute and after the fact, but we bought the wrong bolt. Help us out. And I think if we specify something in our plans and we sign off on them and your engineer sign off on them, then they, they can say that.
There's a lot of things. If it happens to say that a sign is red on our plans and we approve them and then the sign is orange, we don't say, hey, you said it was red, go change it.
Well, that's a big difference from your setback to twenty-five feet and your setback to thirty feet if you're in the butter. You know, and I
We're approving the parts of it that are in the ordinance that like the planning, the zoning ordinance regulates. We're not I don't think just because something's on the plans, like, there's lots of things that are on the plans that we reviewed that don't get built that way.
I just, David, I guess what I'm asking. I know there's a big discussion about the foot candles for the plan. I don't remember if color temperature was discussed or not. So are we holding them to, it was just what was specified at the time. Did we have a big discussion about color temperature for this plan? I don't recall it.
I, I can tell you that every time an applicant comes in from a staff level, we tell them that the board has consistently approved three thousand K because of the warmer light is meets, you know, goals that are not in, in terms of being friendlier to and less impact on the night sky. And so it's not been codified, but because you have the ability to impose conditions, that's how the board has required these. And so we tell applicants upfront that that's the standard. So that's why they presented a three thousand K. They had no problem with doing it because of what we asked them to do.
It wasn't a condition we imposed, though. We didn't say the light shall be three thousand K. It was just what was on the plan?
Correct.
But if they install the four thousand K light and they go around with a light meter and have an engineer reevaluate the light, they're going to be above what we discussed earlier in their first application, correct?
Right.
There's, there's some risk that they could swap it out for the other temperature lights and it would still be one foot candle above what we said, honestly, like, I mean, I don't think there's any way of saying just because that's what was spec, that that's what it ends up. That, that, that was a computer model that we approved.
I'm amazed it was that accurate, to be honest with you. That's pretty good.
The condition of the permit was really just that they had to submit it as a lighting as-built showing that they had said what they were going to install on the plan. So.
I think, I mean, I, I guess I've changed initially what I initially said. It should seem like I guess it seems to me like we should say yes with the condition that they put in a dimmer that has limits. And if that's too difficult, then they can come back and ask it.
Yeah, I mean, I think intent matters a lot. I mean, I think we're all having a little bit, like, they asked for this and then we talked about it, or they asked for, you know, and and, and, but I, you know, I, I think absent, you know, absent some real evidence that there's, this is an attempt to get one over on us or, you know, to kind of go around the thing that we talked about. And if there is a solution, if the dimmer is a solution, and that is more efficient, that I, I, I think I would say, let's, let's just do this and move on.
Yeah, I mean, I think if they were trying to get one over us, they didn't get away, they got off with one fifth of a foot candle, right?
Right.
Like, the average in an office is like thirty to fifty foot candles. There's a huge range. You cannot see a difference in one foot candle.
I'm struck by Carolyn's comment that on a number of the informal discussions with applicants before they come to the planning board, they pretty rigorously talk about three thousand foot candle and not four thousand. I mean, not foot candles, but three thousand of the bulbs, not four thousand. So they've been trying to give that consistent message. And now all of a sudden we start looking into, well, okay, it's already the big Y to use four thousand. They use it. You can go ahead and use four thousand.
No, but we won't approve that on plans. I mean, I mean, this is still something, I mean, I think your analogy to the person before, to the applicant before is, or your comparison is, is apt here. I mean, I, I, like I said, I, I am not seeing a willful, like, attempted something. And I think we're all feeling away. I feel like, I'm feeling a little like my, like, my dad, when, you know, like, he used to be like, I set a rule and, you know, and, and we, we discussed this and the answer is still no. And and I hear you. I mean, I, I don't love that they have put us in this position, but
I just did that.
I, I don't think that, like, again, the zoning does not say three thousand. Carolyn's saying three thousand. I don't think, like, you could have scientists say red houses are nicer to look at than black houses. And so we'll only approve houses that aren't black. I mean, I don't, I just don't think that is how we're making the law. I think this is a gas station. They want to make it a certain, they're, they're still in the same range of warmth that we're asking for. It's not like bright blue lights. For many, many years, all parking lots had like bright yellow silver halide lights and you had no color rendering. This is an eighty-color rendering bulb. It's like quite good light. It's in the warm range. I think we're and I don't agree with what you said, Marissa. I think we would, I wouldn't just like say, oh, you can't have a four thousand or five thousand temperature.
Oh, no, I don't mean that. I mean, I'm saying like, a discussion, I'm saying that we had a discussion, we made a determination and now we're having a feeling of like about the, about the coming back after the mistake. That's all I'm saying. I am not making any comment about what we would. I will say that it is coming, it is coming, that the statute is going to prescribe these things and I, I think that's coming down the road. There are people working, arguing really hard for it. So but that's not really what's before us today. And I, I'm inclined, David, you know, to your point, it seems remarkably similar and that there is an additional control that we could ask them to put on it to further, you know, contain what the issue we see here and far more efficient than asking them to replace everything.
Any last comments before somebody makes a motion?
Carolyn, can I ask a procedural question? I missed the second part of the Big Y hearing when, which I, I think I'm getting this right, that it happened in two parts and I was there for the first part of the discussion. I missed the second hearing, so I was not privy to that second set of conversations nor the vote. Am I okay to vote on this or should I abstain?
No, you're okay to vote on this because this is a separate question. Will you accept a modification to that plan that the board approved?
Okay, thanks. Just making sure.
Yep. And it's not a public hearing, so it's really just whether, this is whether to approve an administrative change based on the as-built that came forward. So we just need to vote.
I would move that we approve the amendment to the original Big Y permit to allow the lighting as-built as opposed to what was in the original plan.
Is that with the dimmer or no?
With, yeah, I would, I would say they, with the dimmer. Second.
We discussed it. But was the dimmer language in their request, Carolyn? I mean, they have the dimmer. It's currently in place, right?
So Right. They just verbally told me that they do have the lights on a dimmer, so they could adjust it with a dimmer to bring the foot candles down.
We asked them to have someone with a little paddle, so if someone reaches for the dimmer, they, we slap their hands.
One hundred percent.
Actually, just look back at their, their application shows seventeen foot candles on the original application in places. So whatever, I agree with, I vote yes. As long, as soon as we vote, I'll vote yes.
So, okay, the motions have been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, we go to voice, vote, voice, vote then. Let's start with Sam.
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
And George. So I'm going to be the odd man out and vote against this modification.
So contrary.
Yeah, once in a while, I think one of us, we have so many unanimous votes, but I really think we should, so that being said, the modification passes by an eight to one motion, eight to one vote. Let's keep going. Where does that leave us? Just with minutes?
Beaverbrook.
Before we go there, Sam, back to the original question, about fifteen years ago, the planning board went on a little site visit at night. The building inspector lent us a light meter and I'm sure they're much more sophisticated now. And we went to a few different locations on King Street and then we could see kind of what the light meter read, fifteen, sixteen foot candles
Yeah.
at one spot and at another. And then we could do a little compare and contrast. I think we went to three different sites. That, that might be an opportunity for us too, just to see a low level, a low level site and more of a high level, high traffic site. It might give us some kind of grounding for those people discussing.
I also want to just point out that LEDs naturally dim over time, like, they don't let, they're when they're first installed, like, a lighting, a lighting designer does not engineer to the lighting as it's, the day it's installed. They engineer to like a year or two out because they all dim over time. And if there's a rating, I don't know what this one has, but like, there's a rating that like, over ten years, it's at seventy. It's a, it's a lot of dimming, like the maximum brightness. So it's like seventy percent after a few years. Seven years. That'll come up when we're paying for new streetlights in the city in a few years.
Um, so the other item is a, well, the applicant hasn't yet requested it, but the Beaverbrook Estates in Leeds, which is up at Chesterfield Avenue, Chestnut Avenue, sorry. Is finally coming to a close. We, the city had held back forty thousand dollar escrow to complete the project. The last little bit that had to be done was submission of as-built for stormwater. And you may remember about a year ago, the board voted to allow the expenditure of that money for the city to expend the money to do the as-built because the applicant was not doing that. And council also approved the expenditure of the funds, but the city has not expended the funds because the applicant stepped up and has proceeded to finalize this project. So as a result, we've just gotten sign off from DPW that the stormwater system is complete. And so I need a motion for, or a vote for the board to allow the release of the forty thousand dollars in that scroll for this project.
Carolyn, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's up with that loop road that goes from the cul-de-sac around? It's like totally washed out. Is that really what's approved? It's like a washed out gravel road.
Well, it was a gravel road. It's a private, it's a gravel driveway. So it's a shared driveway to serve six lots and it's looped so that it can serve six lots instead of just three. And so it's, the owners association has to maintain it. So it's been there for a long time, so it probably is ready for some maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
So, yep, so it says here in the, in the letter that the DPW approved the request to amend the stormwater management permit to allow the loop road to be impervious. So it sounds like they will pave that loop road. Right, gravel and trap rock, impervious surface, surface.
Right, so they want Right, so they wanted to, after it was installed, they wanted, they put some more impervious materials on and gradually over time, but now they've shown through the stormwater calculations that in fact they are making up for that um, change in pervious surface. So it may very well be that they could, they pave it and that would be fine.
You know, just a quick comment, I think we're, we're pretty fortunate in the city. This is a development that kind of went a little bit awry early on, and it's been a consensus for a while, but most of the divisions, you know, are, are really, are up to snuff in terms of maintaining a stormwater permit and getting all your engineers signed off. This is kind of unusual. Which is not a good thing, but uh, certainly points to some of the better construction that happens in the city. Um, any discussion at all? So then, is there a, a recommendation to uh, approve the release of the forty thousand dollars? Or are we recommending, recommending that the city council?
No, this is your project, your, so you vote to uh, allow the release and then um, it would just go to the um, treasurer's office, they're holding the fund.
I move to release the forty thousand dollars in escrow to the Beaverbrook, Brook trustees or whoever should have the forty thousand dollars back.
I second.
And motions have been made and seconded. Any discussion? Right, none will go to a voice vote. Uh, Melissa?
There we go, yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
Was that me? Yes.
And Diana?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
And your votes, that's all, unanimous. Nobody here from the Beaverbrook uh, estate to congratulate, so hopefully we use that money wisely.
So that's it, except for the minutes. So there's from September through November.
I move to approve the minutes.
September twenty third, October fourth, October fourteenth, October twenty eighth, and November eighteenth. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Melissa. Any discussion? Have we saw any typos that were worth shouting out? Okay. Well then, let's vote to approve the minute. Um, let's go, we'll start with Sam.
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna therapy them all. So our last item is to congratulate Marissa on what, your twenty eight months on the planning board, your thirty eight months, any idea?
I don't know, time flies, right? Yeah, I think I came on fall of twenty nineteen.
Yep, yep, great, great. Well, I hope many of your meetings on the, the council are as
As efficient as this one, that would be great.
Wow, in fifty eight minutes, that's pretty good. We should do this more often.
Sure, wait till I'm gone and then, and then uh,
I know you guys were trying to really stretch it out there for a while.
Would you make, like to make the last motion, Marissa?
Uh, I'd move that we adjourn.
I second.
All right. Unfortunately, we have to, uh, any discussion?
Yeah.
I guess, Carolyn, we're not looking at in-person meetings for quite a while at this point, right?
I mean, you could, you could. Um, yeah, you can do, you can do it however you want. There are a couple of committees that are meeting in person. Um, and, you know, council chambers is pretty, I mean, you can spread out council chambers, um, or the hearing room, council chambers, nobody's really using, so.
Isn't it a vaccination clinic? I mean, it is, I got a shot there. Did they stop that now?
No, but they, they come in for the day and then they.
I have a screaming toddler, can you go deal with that?
Okay.
Well, thanks, but then you, it's more work on you because you have to manipulate a, a virtual meeting at the same time.
Well, no, you all could decide. The Central Business Architecture Committee allows Zoom viewing, but no participation. And that works well because that allows people obviously to listen in and see what's going on. Um, but if you really want to participate, you either write a letter um, or come to the meeting.
I'm a big fan of written testimony. Love it.
Yeah.
Did we have a motion on the table?
Sam voted.
Diana?
Yes.
I abstain.
Krista? And Marissa?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay.